Let's bring the meeting to order. Quiet, please. We'll bring the meeting to order for the 2020 Town of Bennington Annual Floor Meeting. As we always do, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Don Campbell, our Select Board Chair, will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm going to read the warning and then we have a couple items before we get into the full agenda. The warning for the Town of Bennington 2020 Annual Town Meeting reads as follows: "The residents of the Town of Bennington qualified by law to vote in town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street at the Lincoln Street entrance in said town on Monday, March 2, 2020 at 7:00 PM or immediately following the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District's annual meeting, should that run over, to transact the business specified to be done from the floor. If you are a resident of the Town of Bennington, intend to be present at the meeting and are hearing impaired, arrangements will be made for a sign interpreter to be present at this meeting. For necessary arrangements, please contact Stuart A. Hurd, Town Manager, at the Bennington Town Offices, 205 South Street, Bennington, Vermont, or call 802-442-1037, not later than February 14, 2020." Following the completion of such business, the meeting will stand adjourned to Tuesday, March 3, 2020, at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street, again at the Lincoln Street entrance. The polls are open from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM for the election of officers and voting on all ballot articles specified. However, those on the checklist to vote in the Village of North Bennington shall vote for the election of officers and on all ballot articles at the North Bennington Village Office on Main Street in North Bennington, which is the North Bennington train station. The Bennington Fire Facility above mentioned is hereby established as the central polling place for those on the checklist to vote in said Bennington. Residents of Bennington and North Bennington may register to vote at the Town Clerk's Office at 205 South Street, Bennington, Vermont. Eligible residents registering on Election Day must do so at the polling place where they will cast their town meeting ballot. We do have an agenda that begins on page 41 in the booklets that were handed out or available at the entrance to the room, but there's three things we are going to do first. And the first thing we are going to do is recognize Jimmy Carroll, who is going to briefly introduce the Mount Anthony Wrestling Team, which just won its 32nd straight state championship.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. It is indeed a distinct honor to be able to introduce this stellar group of athletes, their coaches, and more importantly, to me anyway, their parents. Because without your parents, who sacrificed their time, their money, taking you back and forth to tournaments and practices, we wouldn't be here tonight. But first, I want to read to you a letter that I received today from a fellow in Montpelier. It is Mount Anthony Union High School Wrestling Team, care of Coach Brian Kuhn. Dear Coach Kuhn, athletes, and families, congratulations on winning your 32nd consecutive Vermont High School Wrestling Championship. You have shown great work, ethic, and achievement. Earning this honor is a tremendous milestone. By winning the Vermont High School Wrestling Championship, you have set yourself above the rest. Not only does your championship recognize this year's achievement, but also distinguishes your program on a national level. Winning for 32 years in a row proves that Mount Anthony Union High School has solidified its place as the best in the nation. Coach Kuhn, thank you for inspiring, coaching, and mentoring your student athletes to achieve their best. Additionally, thank you to the parents as well for allowing your children to improve themselves both mentally and physically. Again, congratulations on this well-deserved achievement. I wish you the best next season. Sincerely, Philip B. Scott, Governor of the State of Vermont. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 32nd consecutive wrestling team from the Mount Anthony Union High School. Please welcome them.
about filing homestead exemptions.
It's that time of year again. It's income tax time. It's so important that you file the HS 122 and your HI 144. Even if you file for an extension, still file the HS 122. It's very important. Thank you.
Joan, if it's not filed by April 15, which is the legal deadline, what's the procedure for people who miss that deadline?
You can still come in, or you can still file. You will be penalized by the state as a percentage of what your school taxes are. It's just a small part. When you get your tax bill in August, if you do file by the due date, April 15, everything will be on there. If you have to file for an extension, you may still see the homestead rate, but you will not see a state payment because it won't come down until the second download of state payments. There's three downloads. The third download is just before the taxes are due, so it's real important that you try to get it in as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Joan. One more topic before we get to the main agenda. Mary Morrissey would like to be recognized to speak about Jan Bobb.
Good evening. This is our annual time that we have recognized multiple myeloma in the state of Vermont. And Jan Bobb passed away this past fall, was one of the greatest advocates in not only our local community, but in the state, as well as nationally. He advocated for individuals to know about multiple myeloma, the cancer. As I said, unfortunately, Jan lost his very courageous battle with cancer this past fall. So we do this in memory and honor of him this evening especially. It's our annual proclamation that the governor addresses March as the month to recognize and awareness for multiple myeloma. Whereas multiple myeloma is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow and is called multiple because it can occur at various sites in the body. And whereas multiple myeloma causes a variety of adverse health effects, including a weakened immune system, anemia, kidney damage, and bone deterioration. And whereas multiple myeloma is the second most common blood cancer worldwide. And multiple myeloma affects more than 100,000 people in the United States each year. And whereas once prominently found among those 65 and over, where it continues to be most frequently diagnosed, multiple myeloma is increasingly being identified in younger individuals, including those in their 30s, 40s, and 50s. And whereas multiple myeloma is almost twice as likely to occur among African Americans and is one of the leading causes of cancer deaths among African Americans, with scientific understanding of the disparity remaining unknown. And whereas the cause of multiple myeloma is not known, with robust research being performed in the United States and internationally into potential genetic, environmental, and other risk factors. And whereas additional new drugs and therapies are in the research phase, with patient enrollment in clinic trials playing an important role in determining safe and effective treatments. And whereas understanding the treatment of multiple myeloma has been greatly furthered by the role of advocacy initiatives promoting awareness, education, research, peer review, and collaboration, and such efforts are to be highly commended. And whereas greater awareness of multiple myeloma on the part of clinicians and the general public can lead to the early detection and treatment, improving health outcomes, and the bringing comfort to patients and families. And therefore, I, Philip B. Scott, Governor, hereby proclaim March 2020 as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month of the State of Vermont. And I think in honor of Jan, as I said, Jan was one of the great advocates for each individual out there to advocate for themselves. And I would like Ken Swier to come up. He is part of the support group that Jan started. Ken is a survivor of multiple myeloma as well. And we honor and hope that you will present this to your group.
I'd just like to thank Mary for all she does for the multiple myeloma patients and cancer crusaders and everything else. And they usually don't know where it comes from, but they documented mine when I served in Vietnam. That's where I got mine from Agent Orange. Tough one.
Okay, we are going to move into the business to be transacted from the floor. As always, the ground rules are, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand and seek recognition. Come forward to the microphone in the center of the room, state your name and the subject upon which you would like to speak. As always, only one person speaks at a time, and what you speak on must be germane to the business of tonight's meeting. I will remind those who are here to speak on behalf of the public agencies that are on tomorrow's ballot, we're going to discuss that, and you can come up and make your statements on behalf of your agency under the third agenda item, which is other business. So with that, we're going to move on to the discussion and acceptance of the town report. And because it is in conjunction and included in the town report, it is my understanding that Shannon Barsati is going to make a few words about economic development in the Town of Bennington. Shannon?
I actually have some slides, so I could cut right here. See if I can make this stretch. See if we can make it out of this here. Is that going to work?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the town meeting. It is my year anniversary because I started this time last year on Town Meeting Day. And I have the, oop, uh-oh. There you go, you got it. Okay, I won't touch anything. So I have the job of, the fun job tonight, which was really just some highlights from the annual report, talking about our various departments in the town and some of the initiatives that have happened in 2019. So the motto of the Town of Bennington is serving people through teamwork. And I can, I definitely can say that I've just been impressed with the dedication and the teamwork. And, you know, no one does anything alone with the town. And we really all have to work together and do our job and also respond to crises and opportunities that come our way. So our goals for 2019, and I'm assuming this is every year, is to provide a safe community, opportunities for recreation, encouraging new development and growth, and enhancing the quality of life for our citizens, and improving infrastructure. So some of the big news of 2019 was this quote from Ted Brady, who's the Secretary of the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development, the renewal of the Putnam Block, the Putnam Block redevelopment, which he called the most important economic development project happening in rural Vermont today. And, you know, I just want to thank the Bennington Redevelopment Group and Bill Colvin from the BCIC, Bennington County Industrial Corporation, for spearheading this project and making it happen. Other big news is the United Counseling Service expansion at the Bennington Recreation Center, which will create a new early childhood center downtown. And they received a $3.5 million grant from the Agency of Health and Human Services to create this expansion. And that's a picture. You know that it's a big deal when the governor is here twice within a few weeks. So he was here for the groundbreaking of the Putnam Block and then also for the groundbreaking at the rec center. And that's a photo of the new rec center. The middle part will be the new entrance, and then on the right will be the new childcare So on the theme of development, planning and permitting, this photo is of the Old Town Garage, which is going to be a new distillery. There have been 189 new permits issued in 2019 totaling over $10 million. The planning and permitting are continuing to develop a bicycle and pedestrian network throughout the town, updating our town land use and development regulations to allow for multiple uses, especially downtown. And construction for the new improvements to Cochrane Drive, which will allow for bike and pedestrian infrastructure, are starting this spring. Our Highway Department, Department of Public Works, is always busy. It's almost impossible. They put everything that they're doing onto a slide. Here's some photos of the work that they've done here at the firehouse. New paving, sidewalks, you know, they paved over three miles of road and added 20, over 2,500 feet of concrete curb and sidewalks, new culverts. They've done extensive site work to, for the new park at 336, as well as the Stark Street Playground. They did a lot of the finishing work there. Poured the concrete apron here in front of the firehouse, helped build the splash pad, underground wastewater piping, and electroconduit. Installed new bridge membrane on the Brooklyn Bridge. That's the picture at the far right. This picture kind of in the middle is them paving the new sidewalk that's along Cochrane Drive. And then here, they're also repainting the compass at the four corners, as well as many other tasks, helping with the wastewater treatment facility upgrade, trimming, removing trees, you know, doing a lot of work at the wastewater treatment The Water Department repairing and installing new fire hydrants, lead line replacements, repairing and replacing water main breaks. The Sewer Department, there are a lot of upgrades that are happening at the wastewater treatment facility right now, including adding a pre-screen building, refurbishing the primary digesters, and updating all the controls in the building. Also, starting a new, well, the new composting facility and making compost, as well as treating billions of gallons of wastewater. Our Buildings and Grounds guys are also always busy. They do all the maintenance for our town facilities, such as the Town Office, the Blacksmith Shop, which is where our downtown visitor center is, the Police and Fire Facilities, the Rec Center, Willow Park, Beach Street, Stark Street, Senior Center Downtown, and other facilities as needed. And they've also found time to build a new stage, along with help from CDC and their students and their Buildings and Trades Program, and a new public restroom at Merchants Park. Also, they helped tremendously to build the new natural playground at Stark Street. This picture is the rec center. That shows where the basement for the new addition is going to be, and our staff just still going to work and making it happen. In the middle, this is a photo of a new dock that's at the Greenberg, Headwaters Park, a floating dock there. And then that's Stark Street on the far right. And then our town staff, our Buildings and Ground staff also do all the decorations. So they did the downtown decorations for the Pride Parade, the Battle Day, and the holiday season, which was really beautiful. And my Office of Community Development, there's, a lot has been happening. The Bennington Revolving Loan Program gave out over $380,000 in loans. The Townwide Housing Program gave a $35,000 loan. And Community Development Block Grants, which come through the federal government, to the state, and then to the towns. On your left up here, Monument View Apartments opened. It's a mixed-income housing development that's near downtown. It's beautiful. And that was completed. The Putnam redevelopment is underway. Neighbor Works is also working on rental rehab program throughout town. And Hale Resources is working on a Pleasant Street housing rehab. And those are all funded through community development. Bennington County Cultural Plan was presented, and we're working with the Bennington Area Arts Council on Bennington Arts Weekend, Artists Open Studios Weekends. We started, we restarted the Bennington Town Marketing Campaign, Vermont Begins Here. If you haven't gone to that, you should check it out and sign up for the monthly emails. In recreation, there's a lot of momentum all around our local parks. We have a new playground at Stark Street, a new pocket park. We're going to have a new splash pad and stage at Merchants Park. The Y has renewed the management agreement with the rec center. And we have also the head start expansion happening at the rec center. We've been working with a lot of local recreation groups to be what's called an Appalachian Trail community, to be designated for our proximity to the Appalachian Trail. And we have a lot happening with biking around Bennington. And there's a Bennington Bike Committee. And just initiatives around creating more of a collaboration between all of our outdoor recreation managers. Also, our Historic Preservation Commission received a grant. I'm on the HBC, and we're going to have another kiosk downtown. That's really going to map out our historic sites, as well as our recreation sites. The partnership with the Y, we're continuing our management agreement with them, but they will be, they're hiring and managing all of the staff now at the rec center and doing all of the programming. And they're also doing health and wellness programs at the Senior Center. So this is a photo of one of the new groups that they've started, the Movement Play Group. They're doing a lot of work to attract young families and kids. And this is our new rec center director, Kayla Becker. That photo on the right is the executive director of the Y, Jess Rumlow, with the Easter Bunny, and Morgan, who's the, our aquatics manager, and Taylor, our health and wellness director. And the Y, I got a few numbers from them. They've continued five programs at the Senior Center every week, a boot camp class for adults at the Senior Center, a weekly play group, the new Movement Play Group for over 15 parents and caregivers and their kids, affordable swim lessons every week, include, every, throughout the weekend on Saturdays. And there are over 60 kids enrolled right now. A new teen after-school training program. They're exploring after-school programs and adult physical training offerings. They're going to be doing Healthy Kids Day coming up on April 11 this year at the Willow Park instead of the rec center, since it's under construction. Also, camp is going to be at Willow Park this summer. And they're going to continue T-ball, but they're going to combine it with a sports play, play, intro to sports class for kids aged 3 to 6. The Senior Center is always busy as well, with activities including crafts, exercise classes, painting, ukulele, bingo, movies, potlucks. They also schedule shopping and dining trips, as well as arts and cultural performances. They're working, they're continuing to work with the Y, as well as other partners for wellness. And they, also, the director at the Senior Center, Carrie Fabucia, started a community newsletter that you can sign up for to get updates on the Senior Center and rec center programs. And they are staffed by one town employee and 15 volunteers, who put in over 4,000 volunteer hours in 2019 alone. Our Police Department responded to 11,556 calls for service in 2019 and made 1,119 criminal arrests. They are arguably their most popular member of the department is Gracie, with the K-9 unit there in the middle. They've been busy collecting prescription drugs, also, you know, always on the job, always responding to crises, as well as expanding their community programming. And so they're doing, they've done over 2,800 hours of training, and also a lot of new programs with children, like Operation Copsicle, the New Experience Camp, which they were able to take their, the kids who were in the camp down to New York City to visit the U.S. Coast Guard. They do a bike rodeo about bike safety. That's that picture on the right. They also are doing lots of different activities in local schools, like reading. Today, I just saw a photo of them reading for Dr. Seuss's birthday at some of the local schools. And the chief started a new program called Coffee with the Chief at the Senior Center. That's been really popular. This is a photo from Battle Day as well, when they were there. And they're, they're just involved in many different programs in the community. And the Fire Department responded to 240 calls for service, including saving the barn at Bennington College. That's what that metal photo was, which was really incredible that it was saved. And they worked together with all the fire departments in our region. Fire Safety and Prevention classes in local schools and nursing facilities. And the voters approved the bond to purchase a new fire truck, which has been ordered and will be delivered to the town by the end of this year. Bennington will also host the 2020 Vermont Fire Convention. So those are some of the highlights. And, you know, there are also town departments and boards and commissions that I wasn't able to highlight. So I invite you to look at the benningtonvt.org website to learn more about all of the different town departments and boards and commissions.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. Is there anybody that seeks recognition at this time for any matter discussed by Shannon within this year's town report? Or have any questions or comments on anything within those reports? If you'd like to be recognized, please raise your hand. Gentlemen in the front in the blue jacket. And remember to please state your name and brief description of what it is you're asking.
Ned Perkins. I just had a couple of questions. I noticed in the report, under the BCIC's report on page 20, that the, Bennington's Opportunity Zones have received substantial investment through qualifying opportunity funds with northwards of $5.8 million in five known development projects in town. northwards of $5.8 million in five known development projects in town. I just wondered, can somebody tell me what those are?
I'm going to suggest somebody from the town or the select board answer that question.
I would hope that either Bill, Bill Calvin or Jonathan Cooper would be here because they have the details of those investments, but some of the funds have been used to purchase the former Placine property on Shields Drive, hopefully bringing that back to productive use. I think that's where my memory stops on those particular investments. I think some of those funds also went into the Putnam Block redevelopment. The opportunity zone allows individuals to invest their funds via the purchase of buildings. Another building that was purchased was the building that houses Ramontos. And the commitment by the investor is that he will spend, I think it's twice as much in redeveloping the building itself. So, for instance, if you invest $500,000 in a piece of property, you have to invest a million to upgrade that property and bring it back into productive use. So those are three that I can remember, and I'm sorry, I don't have all of the details there.
I believe Taco Bell of the building that houses Taco Bell was included in that as well.
Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you. Just, and then I got, on the budget, I just had-
Please.
-a couple of questions. Got my glasses on. Couple of lines that have jumped up considerably. Permit, planning, coding, enforcing.
Could you direct us to the page you're on, just so people can follow?
Yeah, I'm looking on page 45, which is the budget, municipal budget proposal. Permit, planning, coding, enforcing is going up $86,000. Buildings and grounds is going up $63,000. The police is going up $365,000. And senior citizens is going up $55,000. So that's about a half a million dollars altogether. I'm just wondering why I should vote for that.
I can attempt to answer those, Mr. Moderator.
Stuart.
The buildings and ground budget is principally influenced, one, by the cost of health care, which most of you know, most health care plans went up about 11% this year as approved by the folks at the state level. We also plan to purchase outright a vehicle in the buildings and grounds budget. So the budget will rise, as the gentleman has pointed out, but those, those costs are costs that are necessary to continue to improve the facilities that we operate. On the permitting and planning, that really is related to the movement of a recreation center full-time employee to the town offices. In the past, we had an individual who was paid out of the water and sewer funds, working as part of our reception. She has now moved or relocated to the Public Works Department. Her salary stays in both the water and sewer funds. But in transporting that individual out of the recreation center budget into the permitting and planning budget, she becomes part of the reception crew. So you have the full-time benefits and payroll of a new, an individual who was, hasn't been employed actually with us for almost 30 years, now being in a different department. And that's where that cost comes from. And the last one was the police.
The police, yeah.
Yes. The police have contracted with the superintendent's office to provide a school resource officer in every elementary school. In the, in the past years, it's only been at the middle school or the high school for short periods of time. We will receive compensation from the superintendent's office or the SPSU, or the particular budget that it impacts, probably the elementary school budget, for the times that they are in the elementary school. So about two-thirds of their pay and benefits will come from the school district. The other one-third, the town is picking up. But essentially, we are gaining three patrol officers for the cost of one. And when they're not in the school systems, they will be out doing traffic enforcement and other, some of the other things that we receive grant funds for. So principally, if you look at the revenue side of the budget, you will see an increase, substantial increase in the revenue under special services for police.
Except we paid for it when we pay our school taxes.
That is true, but the school, the school board has asked us to provide that service because it, one, it introduces young children to police officers in a light that is different than they might receive later in life. And, two, it allows for a certain amount of protection, as you will, in those, in those schools should something terrible happen. And we do see those things more and more, unfortunately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that seeks recognition on anything within, there's a, there's a, in the back of the room in the blue shirt?
Hi, Nancy White. I'd like to know if the town has done anything to take a look at the Southern Vermont College property?
We actually took a very brief look at that property when the proposal was made that the town might spend some of our local option taxes, should they be approved. Fortunately, there is another offer on the property from a private individual, and so we have stepped back because if that private individual does follow through with their letter of intent, that will put the property back into productive use and potentially on the tax rolls.
Okay, so it isn't going to be going to a county or regional group? It will be private use?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. The other question that I have a lot of concerns about that I asked about last week is the BCIC, BCRC, the regional groups with their worker community challenge. As I understand it, it's going to be basically about bringing people from other countries to Bennington, correct?
I'm not familiar with the program, but I think you're right, yes.
Okay. And what I've read in the, in the article in the Brattleboro Reformer, it says it will be starting by bringing people seeking asylum. Will that be the same here?
I can't answer that.
Well, I think that's something that we need to understand and we need to discuss as a town before it is allowed to move forward. With a 25% poverty rate, with a high-low income population, I don't understand where anybody thinks that we will have the resources to help people from other countries. I also think it's up to the select board to hold the public meetings, to hear input from citizens about how they feel about this program, and I think it needs to be put on a ballot for the Bennington voters to decide. If the nonprofits are looking for $900,000 from the taxpayers this year, maybe these groups can find the money so we could get a break. But, but I think without having public hearings, giving us the information, and there's nothing mentioned in the town report about the asylum issue at all, and it should be.
Well, I would argue, Nancy, that it's not a town initiative.
Don't we pay every regional group?
Well, one at a time.
We, we, we contract with the Bennington County Regional Commission for planning and support services for our planning department. We also contract with them as the leaders of the Bennington County Industrial Corporation to help us with economic development. Those are, those are the two issues that we deal with, with the Bennington County Regional Commission. This other opportunity, I think, is seen as a means of essentially growing our population. We've all been concerned about the fact that we are getting to be an older community. We're getting to be a community that is stagnating in growth as far as population. And immigration may be a way to supplant some of the losses that we're suffering and bring extra diversity to the community.
But again, our local-
Well, Nancy, one at a time. You asked a question, we gotta let Stu answer.
Okay.
I mean, I've said my piece, thank you, Jason.
When we're talking about contracting with these groups, we are using money from our town budget to pay these contracts, correct?
Only for the issues that I talked about, permitting and planning and development issues, economic development issues. We're not paying, and I don't, I don't know that BCIC or BCRC are one of the groups that are interested in this particular initiative. I think these are groups that are much bigger and have much more far-reaching capabilities than either of those organizations.
There was a new regional group four or five years ago that came before the select board, the Southern Vermont Economic Group, that links Bennington with Brattleboro. Now, most of the groups who are talking about this program and the people are located in the Brattleboro area. And I would ask people on the select board, isn't this a program that you think the citizens of Bennington should have a say about?
I can only say-
Is there anybody from the select board that would like to be recognized on that matter? It was addressed to the select board. Gene Jenkins.
I'm fine. I would be happy to respond to that. My understanding is that Wyndham County Economic Development Body and Bennington County Industrial Corporation are part of a grant application that was successful to do some planning to look at the possibility of pursuing various ways repopulating Southern Vermont. So I am, I, I would expect what would come out of this planning period is are some ways to connect with the community and get community input as they move forward. So this is not a town initiative, but I would expect as part of the planning process that we will all be asked to, to have be parts of discussions on this.
Well, I, I would urge the select board to start having public hearings. The group should have meetings so we can get information and ask questions. There's something wrong when people are being forced from their homes in Bennington, and yet at the same time, we can afford to bring people from other countries here. It's great to be able to help, but I think this is really taking advantage of the people of Bennington.
Is there anybody else that seeks recognition on any matter within the town report? In the back with the striped shirt. Please come forward, state your name and the topic upon which you would like to speak.
My name is, my name is Gene Flanders. I'm a lifetime resident of Bennington, except for my military service. And I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I'm here to say a few things that my wife has told me when I spoke at home, I should come down and say a few things. So I'm here. And I'm, to start with, I'm angry to the point where I'm pissed off, I guess.
That's out of order, Mr. Flanders.
I'm sorry, okay. Okay, I apologize. Man is hell. Out of order, I'm sorry. Okay. What I'd like to talk about, I mean, some of the things, I have a few notes, is the rec center. For one thing, I don't pertain to know all the facts, or do I understand everything, but I am trying. So here goes. I don't understand the partnership with the YMCA to start with. I guess I'm just old school, it's new programs and everything like that. I don't understand, I don't know, I guess I'm kind of old-fashioned. I can remember that people that used to run our rec center used to come from the community. I can remember, again, Mr. Black, Lou Dana, I mean, they were great people, lived in our community. And, well, I don't understand the partnership with these outer towners. Well, that's one thing.
Was, was there a question, or is that just a comment?
No, it's just a comment, sir. These are just comments, I guess. And another one is this UCS partnership. It's not a partnership, but I don't understand all the programs and stuff like that, and I've heard different programs that I don't quite understand, but I've heard programs about the daycare center and all these different programs and-
On, on that, I, I'm going to ask a question of the board and of the town manager. Do those UCS programs have any funding from the town or contained within this town report?
No, they do not.
Okay.
I'm going to say that that's not germane and is for a different time. While the concern may be illegitimate, it's not for this meeting.
Mine, sir, thank you.
Jason, perhaps, just, just if I could?
Briefly.
The UCS program is the Head Start Program. It's a program that has existed in this community for decades. It has, has been located in the village of North Bennington in a, in a rental property. They are, they have received grant funds from the USDA and others to build a new facility at the recreation center, thus attempting to bring those folks and those, those children into a community center approach. So that's, that's what that project is in particular. And if I could, the people currently managing the rec center, the director is Kayla Becker. She's a Bennington resident. Morgan is the aquatics director. He's a lifelong Bennington resident. And Taylor Haynes is the program director. She's a lifelong Bennington resident. We have not farmed out-
Okay, okay, Stu, you shut me down on that one. I apologize.
Sir, we've let you speak. You gotta let Stu answer too. Stu, are you?
I, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Flanders, you may continue.
Okay, well, let's get the, the monies, the grant money. My biggest question about the grant money, what happens when the grant money runs out in a certain phase of a certain project? Say, will that project come to a stop, or will the taxpayers be burdened with the expense of going forward with that certain phase of that program? And then-
In fairness to the board and to the town staff?
That's not me. Wrong again?
No, no, just let me clarify something. I think you need to clarify which grant project you're concerned about. Is there one in particular?
Just all the construction, like, I used, I grew up on Grove Street, and when I go by there and see all the construction there, I just kind of shudder, I guess. I'm not sure, but I just don't understand about the, the money, like the maintenance, like when the grant money runs out, whatever it is, I don't quite understand, but the maintenance costs afterwards when the grant money runs out. Will that be burden to the taxpayers? I assume it would be, I-
Again, that's a tax question, so I'm going to direct it to the town staff or to the select board, but in fairness to the town staff or the select board, is there a specific project you're concerned about?
No, I guess not. How about, can I speak upon the, some of the things that are on the, that we're going to be voting on far as the recreational budget? I called Stuart, and I wasn't, it used to be on the article that we vote on tomorrow, but now according to, I called Stuart, and he told me that's in with the financial year budget. Am I correct there, Stuart?
The recreation, the recreation expenses have been carried in the, in the general fund budget for as long as I've been an employee of the town, which is 47 years. There's been no change.
No change. But people don't seem to know what that, maybe I'm getting that because we're, have these articles, it's not a separate, so people do know.
If, if your, your question on the grant funds was related to the United Counseling Service building project, that, that project, when built, will be owned by and operated by the United Counseling Service. There will be no town funds that go into the operation or maintenance of that facility. And that is, that was part of the original agreement. So if that was one of your concerns, that is true.
Yes, okay. Okay, and, well, can I say anything about the 1% sales tax at this time or no?
You, you may make a comment or ask a question about that.
Well, okay.
It's on the ballot tomorrow. It's a financial question.
Being a retired senior citizen on a fixed income, I can't vote for any kind of tax increase, to be honest. I don't know, I, just as, I don't mind a fixed income like a lot of people, and any kind of a tax income, I can't vote on it, to be, and I guess, while the select board, we've got a couple of open seats, so I just make a comment, we, maybe we get to a couple people?
I'm going to rule any campaign speeches or endorsements out of order. This isn't the time or place for that. There's been candidate forums, they've been interviewed by the Bennington banner. It would be patently unfair to-
Okay, sir.
-to the candidates that are running to allow that tonight.
Okay, and I guess my last comment would be that we just need to start living within our means in town. Stop the spending your projects and maybe just live within our means again. I guess that's about it. I just, I feel better I come down and said something.
Well, thank you for your comments and questions.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that seeks recognition on town report matters? The lady in, who's standing in the middle of the room?
I have a question. May I speak to Article Four?
Could, could you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Beth Artisti. My husband and I live in North Bennington. Or is Article Four, I'm new to this, is Article- Or is Article Four, I'm new to this, is Article Four something that has to wait?
Nope. Article Four is, our, we're...
It's about the CUD.
It's...
Wherever, I'll sit back down and wait.
You've been recognized for, it's in the Town Report, it could be under other business book. Please go ahead.
Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to speak in favor of Article Four to the voters there, and the voters here, and the voters out there, that the, we encourage Bennington residents to vote yes on the Town joining the new Southern Vermont Communication Union District, also known as the CUD. The CUD, by state law, will not use any local taxes. For residents like us who have inadequate or no high-speed internet, it offers the hope of getting a new connection, a good connection. We haven't found any other alternative. The costs are borne by those who choose to be subscribers. For residents who are satisfied with their current connections, there won't be any change except that the whole area will become more desirable for workers and businesses that need good internet connections. We think that a yes vote on Article Four tomorrow will benefit all of the Bennington community. Thanks.
Any further questions on Town Report items? If there isn't, a motion to, up, we have the man in the gray shirt.
Jason Frederiksen. Sorry, I went on the Town website, or whatever, to try to find the percentages that were agreed on for the 1% option tax, and I couldn't find them. So I just want to re-clarify what the percentages are.
Is there anybody from the Town Staff?
I couldn't find them in the Town Report, which is actually posted today. So, it's a good thing. I just want to know what they were, so for clarification.
Sure. We, we set as an interim policy, so we set a policy for how we would work that through with the community. And then as interim measure for this year, we set them at 35%...
For marketing and economic development.
For economic development, right?
It's kind of, okay.
Let's see. I'm going to need your help, Stuart.
I have them right, right up the top.
Thank you.
It's 40% for real estate or property tax reduction and debt reduction, 35% for economic development, 15% for marketing, and 10% for the community-built park, which is the playground area that the community put together about 20 years ago up at Willow Park. It really has lived, outlived its useful life.
Yeah. No, it's, it's cool. I just couldn't find that information, and so I wanted to hear it.
It should be there, it should be there through one of the links, but I, I don't put the stuff there, but I think it's...
I know. I was regretful that it wasn't there, so I wanted to hopefully hear it out loud so that everybody listening could hear that, too, for tomorrow.
It's a good question. It's a big ballot item tomorrow.
Huge, and we want it to pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions or a motion to accept the Town Report? There's a motion to accept the Town Report. There's a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting the Town Report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Town Report is deemed accepted. Next. Article Two this evening is Select Board Members Compensation. If my memory is correct, it's $1,400 a year per member?
That's correct.
Is there anybody who would like to discuss that matter? Sam Mercino, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Sam Mercino. I'd like to talk about compensation for the Select Board. As you know, minimum wage has gone up, so I think the Select Board members should have an increase in minimum wage. Has been spoke about that our Select Board members get $1,400 a year. That's less than what babysitters get. If you go with the minimum wage, okay, where are we going to get that funding? I know this is somewhat harsh, but I think we should rescind the salaries of Town Administrator and the Town Clerk to pay our Select Board members. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments about Select Board compensation for the upcoming fiscal year? Joe Hall.
Yeah, I'm Joe Hall, Bennington. I know you folks work hard, and you probably deserve a lot more money than what you're receiving. However, I think most of us serve our community because we think we have something to offer. We think that we have important issues that we can maybe help work on, but we do that for our community. And I don't think there's anybody that joins a board, gets elected to a board, is doing it to get wealthy, because I don't think it'll happen. And therefore, because it is a community service, I think the, the amount that they receive should remain the same.
Thank you. Is there any further comment, question, or emotion regarding the issue of Select Board Member Compensation, which is currently $1,400 per year per member? In the back in the red, please come forward.
I'm Jara Greenfield. It's not specifically about the Select Board Compensation, but the other two pieces about Town Manager and Town Clerk, those are closed.
We are right now talking about Select Board Member Compensation.
Okay. Could the Select Board, anyone, address the logic behind increasing the compensation as someone speaking without a position?
In fairness, the Select Board hasn't proposed that.
Okay. Could somebody please give us an explanation for where this comes from?
Is there anybody that seeks recognition to answer that question?
I'd like to know, perhaps, the logic and/or history around this proposal to increase the...
There is no proposal to increase. That was a private comment made by a member of the community who suggested it should happen. One of, as you may know, the actual action items at the Bennington Town Meeting has shrank considerably over the years. There's really not, there's not much meaningful business transacted at this floor, shouldn't say much meaningful business, but there's, in terms of money being spent and budget items being allocated tonight, this is really the only one that will be worked out tonight. The rest will be voted on tomorrow, on several different ballot articles. I, I can say to you, just from a point of historical perspective, I think the compensation has been $1,400 for at least 15 years, if not longer.
Okay. Thank you for that historical context.
But in terms of the Town advocating for an increase, or any member of the Select Board, in fairness to the folks at the front of the room, to my knowledge, they haven't done that. That was a comment made by another citizen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment, question, or emotion regarding Select Board Compensation? Joe Hall.
I'll move that the, the compensation remain the same as...
There's a motion on the floor to set Select Board Compensation for the time period between April 1, 2020, and 3/31/2021 at $1,400 per member. Is there a second to that motion? There are several seconds. Are there any? If there's no further comment, and seeing none, all those in favor of setting compensation at $1,400 per year per member, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
The Chair believes the ayes have it, and if there's no objection, the ayes do have Select Board Compensation is set at $1,400 per member for the next year.
I'm trying to get you guys to raise.
Next. Article Three, Other Business. It is at this time, I know it has become a tradition, that each of the, each of the nonprofits that are on the ballot tomorrow, which is Articles Five through Sixteen, have an opportunity to make brief comments regarding their, their nonprofits. But before we get to anybody speaking on behalf of nonprofits, is there anybody that would like to speak about any other, other business before we get to that portion of the agenda this evening? We have somebody at the front of the room. Please come forward.
Hello, I'm Rosa Vanwee from Bennington. I'm speaking for something affecting all the Monters. I live in Bennington, and I'd like to take a moment to share information about Prop Five. Prop Five is...
Could you please step a little bit further back, so there's not so much for it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Prop Five is a proposal that would amend the Constitution of the State of Vermont to guarantee the right to personal reproductive liberty for all Vermonters.
Ma'am, I'm going to rule you out of order right there. That's not on the ballot tomorrow. It's not germane to the Town business. The Town doesn't have the authority to act or set any rules on that subject, so I'm going to rule that out of order.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from anybody else in regards to any other, other business before we get to the nonprofits? Seeing none, I'd like to do this in order in the way presented, beginning on page 43. So if there's anybody from the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse that would like to come forward for brief comments, please do so. Identify yourself, and if we can hold the comments to a minute or two per nonprofit, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Joy Kitchell. I'm the Executive Director of the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse. And I'd like to thank the voters of Bennington for supporting us again for this current fiscal year in the amount of $5,000, and we are asking for that same funding again for the upcoming fiscal year. I wanted to point out that even though we, our, our trade name is the Child Advocacy Center, we serve all victims of sexual abuse, regardless of their age. And that is done at our office on Elm Street, and we are celebrating our fifth anniversary of being in our own building. And that is due to the support of the community, and I just want to thank you for that. And just a really quick plug, we also are the home for the Bike Drive, so if you ever have bikes, we give those to kids that are in care, and we also give it, sometimes we give them to teens that need to get to jobs, and the only way they could get there would be with a bike. And so if you have any bikes in your garage, please drop them off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, is there anybody related to Article Six for the allocation to Project Against Violent Encounters, also known as PAVE?
Hello, I'm Suzanne Kirkpatrick. I live in Bennington, and I'm here to speak for PAVE. I am more comfortable just speaking, but our new Executive Director has written something out that, that talks about PAVE, and so I feel like I should be reporting her words, and it's a little more awkward for me. Project Against Violent Encounters, PAVE, is a nonprofit agency located in the heart of Bennington, serving Bennington County, that works to serve all members of the community. We're committed to providing compassionate support, practical services, and the pathway to healing. PAVE has grown tremendously over the years. It does things like have a 24 crisis hotline, comprehensive support services including court, and social advocacy, case management, emergency financial assistance, access to legal services, access to emergency shelter, supervised visitation programming, parenting classes, community awareness, school-based programs, violence protection, education, and more. And I am going to cut some of it, but the statistics, I think, are important. 849 Bennington residents have been helped with the comprehensive services. These residents reserved emotional, received emotional support and safety planning to, everything from that to emergency, emergency shelter and transportation. Eighty-nine adults and 59 children with 3,745 nights of shelter services were provided in the last year. Over 3,400 individuals in the Bennington School District have been affected, both teachers and students, through PAVE's family time, supervised visitation. Forty-six families with 52 children received services, which was an increase, a significant increase over the year prior. Because we're on call, most of the time, that means supporting someone on the telephone, but many times it means getting up in the middle of the night and helping people fill out RFAs or restraining orders, since people seem to understand that term better, and often going to the hospital.
Ma'am, in fairness to the others, we are running over.
We thank you for your past support. We're asking for the same amount, so we hope you get it.
Thank you. Would anybody like to come forth and speak about Article Seven, the allocation for the Green Mountain Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, also known as RSVP?
Hi there, I'm Kathy Alibardi. I oversee the Green Mountain RSVP program. First off, we'd like to thank the voters for the past support and the opportunity to speak here tonight. My favorite thing to do. The importance of volunteers cannot be overstated. Volunteers provide nonprofit organizations with the sweat equity they need to fulfill their mission to provide invaluable support within their communities. There are currently 88 Green Mountain RSVP volunteers in Bennington, doing many things, tax aid, currently delivering or preparing the meals for Meals on Wheels, serving at the hospital at BPI. We have 29 in food pantries, or have, those who have volunteered through Stop the Bus. We have companionship, money management volunteers through the Council on Aging, transportation through Green Mountain Community Network. We have a lot of volunteers that do some administrative duties at the Senior Center, the Tutorial Center, CRJ, Better Bennington Corp. There's a, we have 10 volunteers that lead bone builder classes, serving 111 participants in Bennington alone. 23 provide support to the library, the museum, Molly Stark mentors, and a new program, La Fraude Education, presentations to older adults. We are also looking for level funding, and we thank our volunteers, many of you here tonight, and we are always looking for more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Article Eight. Is there anybody from Brock Community Action in southwestern Vermont that would seek
Hi, my name is Sandy Basett. I am representing Brock tonight. I work at Brock as a Housing Coordinator. And on behalf of Brock, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Over the past year, Brock Community Action has demonstrated strong community impact in the town of Bennington. We have served 1,460 individuals with needs, according to, including food and community health, senior USDA commodities, housing counseling, heating, utility assistance, forms assistance, and benefits such as Three Square Budget Counseling, case management, resource and referral, income tax prep throughout community service departments. Forty-four homes or units were weatherized or had energy efficiency measures performed, reducing energy costs through the Weatherization Assistance Program. Twelve individuals worked on starting small businesses with our business counselor through our business development program. Eighteen daycare home providers were partially reimbursed through our child and adult care food programming for serving USDA recommended meals and snacks to approximately 180 children. And at this point, we would just like to thank you for your...
Jason, just to clarify, their request was reduced last year, so they are asking for the same amount they received last year.
Okay. Thank you. Next, is there anybody that would like to speak on Article IX, the allocation for the Vermont Center for Independent Living?
Good evening. My name is Charlie Murphy, and I'd like folks to consider voting yes on Article IX, funding for the Vermont Center for Independent Living. My colleague Lynn Maza is my guide for this evening. I'm blind. And the people that work in the Peer Advocacy Program, one of the services of the Vermont Center for Independent Living, all are peer advocates, have a disability. And we try to help other folks in a peer-to-peer relationship attain the goals that they come to our organization for support and achieving. We also have something called the Home Access Program that helps people put in a ramp into their entryway, widen the entryway into their home and bathroom modification. There's also the Sue Williams Freedom Fund, which provides a grant of up to $1,500 to help people buy equipment, appliances, items that help a person live more independently. We also provide a program called the Vermont Equipment Distribution Program that help people that are hard of hearing and deaf or deaf to get them or help them purchase communication devices like a Cap电话 phone or a computer that helps folks that are deaf use a video phone for communication. We also house the Vermont Interpreter Referral Service. We also provide Meals on Wheels to people under the age of 60 in emergency situations, short-term and also long-term. And my colleague Lynn organizes workshops throughout the year. The one that we're having next week is Yoga for Everybody, and the one that we had last month was Obstacles to Voting that was put on by Disability Rights Vermont. And then next Thursday, we're bringing a bus, a Green Mountain Community Network. We've contracted with them to bring a bus up to Disability Awareness Day at the Legislature. So that's a little bit of what we do. And if you have any questions, you can call me at 802-445-3015. Our office is in the Nichols Annex of the First Baptist Church on the corner of Valentine and Main. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on Article 10, the allocation for southwestern Vermont Council on Aging Incorporated?
Hello. My name's Elizabeth Fredland. I'm on the board on the Council on Aging. And I'm here because I wanted to, as a representative of the board, to thank the people of Bennington for the funding of last year and hope that you will continue to support the Council on Aging for the coming year, which provides invaluable services to our community, including, I think, the least appreciated one, which is options counseling, so that if you're trying to figure out what you're going to do with your Medicare Part B, C, and D, there are free unbiased counselors that you can call to give you advice and guide you through the process, among many other services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, is there anybody here who would like to speak from the Tutorial Center for their allocation on Article 11?
Good evening. I'm Peter Fish, the Executive Director of the Tutorial Center. Just like to thank the voters of Bennington for your generous support of the Tutorial Center over the years. We offer many services to support learners of all ages, adult education and literacy services free for Bennington County adult learners 16 and up. We help students build measurable skill gains in basic reading, writing, and math. We develop personal and interpersonal skills. We develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills. We help students learn digital literacy, leading to achievement of a high school diploma or GED credential. We prepare students for successful transition to post-secondary education and training, and support success in obtaining and maintaining employment. We also offer our high school completion program in collaboration with Bennington County Schools. We host GED prep classes and test center, as well as ESL English as a second language classes, and personalized tutoring for all ages and subjects and grade levels. And we help strengthen job skills and computer skills. We offer SAT and ACT prep. And we also feature our youth agricultural summer program and Sealing's elementary level after-school program. And also, new this year, the Tutorial Center now offers certification exams in electrical and plumbing for people to obtain licensing through the state of Vermont. In addition, there are many other exams, PROV offers, that can be taken through the Tutorial Center. Since January, eight people from Woodford to Manchester have passed journeyman exams for electrical and plumbing, as well as one solar engineer. Thank you very much.
Next, is there anybody here who would like to speak on Article 12, the allocation for Bennington Project?
Yes. Thank you. I've been waiting my turn. I have to go to choir rehearsal after this. My name is Linda Putney. I'm President of the Board of Bennington Project Independence. But I'm here not only as President of the Board, I'm here as a former caregiver. My mom lived with, my husband and I, for almost two years. She had Alzheimer's disease, and we wouldn't have been able to get through it if it hadn't been for Bennington Project Independence Adult Day Service. So I'm going to, that's part of my testimony, but I'm going to read just a couple of other testimonies from other people. One person says, "BPI meets all my mom's needs. She has recently taken up crocheting again through a class offered at BPI and loves it. Mom thinks very highly of the staff. Everyone is so nice. Once she started attending, she was happy to see a few people she knew." Another person says, "I'm so thankful that my husband enjoys being at BPI. I feel very comfortable knowing he's with you, and I can relax and focus on other things." And then another person says, "The staff and establishment are amazing. You couldn't find a better adult day service to send your loved one to." So I want to thank the voters of Bennington for their support in the past that they've given to BPI, and ask that they vote again to help BPI in its mission of giving exceptional day service to adults and their families facing the challenges of aging and disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this signed? Is that, okay. Next, Article 13, Bennington Free Clinic. Is there anybody that would like to speak on that? Thank you.
Hi. I'm Janice Larago. I'm a member of the Board of GBICs, the Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, which hosts the Bennington Free Clinic. And I am pleased to speak to you tonight, first to thank you for your ongoing support, and secondly, to tell you a little bit about what's been happening for the Free Clinic. The Free Clinic is one of several programs hosted by GBICs. It provides care for uninsured adults. Last year, it provided close to 500 visits, medical visits, to over 300 individuals. Unfortunately, not all individuals are able or to afford or to get insurance, and the Free Clinic for the past 10 years has been filling that gap. It's almost totally staffed by volunteers, all the way from Dr. Dick Dundas, who's the medical director, to other physicians, nurses, and volunteers who are there to help greet and take care of patients that come to our two clinics. I also want to mention that last year, the town increased our funding at our request to open a dental clinic at Molly Stark School. Molly Stark is one of three local schools who rank at the very bottom of Vermont's schools in terms of dental health. Last year, we had a hygienist working at the clinic who saw 93 students. Eighty-five of them were referred on to local dentists because they had one or more cavities untreated. She also provided cleaning and sealants to help prevent cavities. So the money that we've gotten from the town has been invaluable in helping support the Free Clinic for the uninsured and for dental clinic at Molly Stark, a service which we'd be glad to expand when we have the resources to do that. So we want to thank you for your help. And if I could just mention one other thing-
Very briefly, please.
Yes. We have a new director, Scott Winslow. Sue Andrews, who has been at the Free Clinic for 10 years, retired this year. And there will be an open house this Friday, 1 to 3, too. Thanks, Sue, for her service. You're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Article 14, the allocation for Sunrise Family Resource Center.
Hi there. I'm Al Bishefkin, and Treasurer of the Board of Directors for Sunrise Family Resource Center. First of all, I want to thank you, the selectmen, the town, and the town people for supporting the multitude of services in town. It's important. And I know that for Sunrise, your allocation is really helpful, and for the other resources, it's helpful as well. We're a cog in the wheel of helping organizations throughout Bennington, and our primary focus is working with families with young children. As a helping agency, we're located downtown with available, easy access for families. For many families, we are the entry to the many supportive services that can help with issues like preventing child abuse, housing, childcare, and economic development. Of the many households that we help, over 950 come from the town of Bennington. Bennington has a lot of good things going for it, yet sadly, there are families in Bennington that don't have the knowledge or the resources available to them, and lack the breaks available to others. Organizations like Sunrise are here to strengthen families and to open doors to new opportunities. Most importantly, we are a childcare center and are licensed for 22 children, six weeks to three years, with priority slots given to our onsite young parents participating in our alternative school that has graduated 110 students to date. That's one of many programs offered at Sunrise. So I'm asking folks from Bennington to vote yes on the request for $15,000 by Sunrise Family Resource Center and by doing your part in helping to make Bennington a more equitable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Article 15, the allocation for VNA and hospice of the southwest region. Is there anybody here to speak for them? Seeing nobody, next is Article 16, the allocation for the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless.
Good evening. My name is Dan Lucy, and for the last three years, I've been on the board of the Homeless Coalition, and I've seen firsthand the dedication and boundless energy that the staff has provided to ensure that people in this town have safe housing and all the supports they need. I do have some scripts with statistics that the staff has given me. We've been helping families and individuals break the cycle of homelessness and gain permanent housing for over 20 years. The Homeless Coalition operates two emergency shelters, one for families and another for individuals. This past year, we housed 175 individuals, including 29 families. Our family shelter can house nine families, and our singles shelter can house up to 16 individuals. This time of year, both shelters are always at capacity. The Homeless Coalition strives to be more than just a bed. In addition to shelter, guests also gain access to case management, life skills programming that provide them with the necessary tools to sustain permanent housing. 966 Main Street serves as our drop-in center for anyone who is homeless. Last year, we provided 1,000 drop-in services. They can get out of the cold, meet with a case manager, utilizing bathroom and laundry facilities, and gain access to food, clothing, personal items, and bedding. In addition, for the past several years, the Homeless Coalition has organized Warm the Children, where we have provided clothing for over 200 children throughout Bennington County. We thank you again for your ongoing support, and ask for your support tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of the speeches on behalf of the nonprofit organizations. We've concluded the agenda. It is appropriate to remind everybody what the agenda is for tomorrow. First, there is a Select Board election for two Select Board seats for two elected terms of three years each. Article I, shall the town appropriate for the next fiscal year from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, the total sum of $13,921,440. The article lays out some specifics below that. Article II is a question, shall the bonds of the town of Bennington in an amount not to exceed $9.5 million be issued for the purpose of replacing lead service lines throughout the town, such monies to be fully expended from state and federal grant funds? Article III is the question on shall voters assess a 1% local option tax on each of the following: the meals tax, the rooms tax, the alcoholic beverage tax, and the sales tax. And there is also a question on whether or not the town of Bennington should join the Southern Vermont Communications District. And in addition to all those are the 12 articles that we just heard from various community members about. Having concluded tonight's agenda, unless there is any other business, a motion to adjourn would be appropriate. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? There's a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting stands adjourned until tomorrow morning's polling place is open.